Not yet. Oh, one, two, one, two. There we go. All right. Okay. Well, we're all here. We will call this business meeting of the Kalamazoo Township Board of Trustees to order at seven thirty-seven, and we're in order. Trustee Leonard, here to use the pludge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will proceed to a roll call. Treasurer Miller?
Here.
Trustee Glass?
Here.
Clerk Mackey?
Here.
I'm Supervisor Combs. Trustee Leonard?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Here.
And Trustee Sherwood?
Here.
And we have a quorum. Thank you very much. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none. We will proceed to our first of two public comment periods this evening. If you'd like to make a public comment, feel free to step to the podium, whichever suits you best. You'll have three minutes. Let us know your name and address. Seeing none in the room, and apologies for the hum. It comes and goes. Is there any public comment on Zoom? Thank you very much. We will proceed next to the consent agenda. Clerk Mackey?
I will move to approve the consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent and supervisor.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The motion carries. Thank you very much. We will proceed to the public hearing and presentation this evening. We do have a presentation from Pryne and Newhoff on non-motorized improvements. Please feel free to step forward.
Hi. I'm Ryan Russell with Pryne and Newhoff. I'm the project manager and engineer for the twenty twenty-five non-motorized pathway projects. I'm glad to say that the project is completed for the year. A little bit of cleanup here and there, but other than that, all the sidewalk has been put in. We did seven spot repairs and twenty-six ADA ramps, along with a connection to Grand Prairie on Chaprelle. That was a hundred and eighty feet long. That's a really nice connection back there to that neighborhood. Just kind of an overview of who did the work. It was Next Gen Construction with Coal Concrete as a subcontractor. They did a great job. Anlon was second on that bid, but the discrepancy between those two was quite large. But one thing I would like to bring to everyone's attention is just that the master plan for the non-motorized has, that plan has kind of run its course. It was a twenty twenty to twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five plan. I guess just a quick overview of that. So I took off of page four of the master plan, kind of the priorities, and we actually hit every single one of those priorities, and we had an estimated total beyond the priorities of a hundred and eighty-four ADA orphaned corners, and as of right now, we only have sixty-six left to do. And, I mean, we won't go through everything, but I did update the map on the master plan. And if you just kind of flip between the twenty twenty-five and, and what was proposed, seeing the switch from red squares to yellow squares is, is, is very nice. Um, just of my handout, I attached a bunch of maps. But then in the master plan towards the rear, there's also those same maps. So in my handout, those are updated. So just in your own time, you can kind of see the drastic change in how many we've done. Beyond the ADA ramps and spot repairs, there's been numerous long sections of sidewalk we've installed over the past five years. I'd say the biggest win was our intergovernmental cooperation with Lake Street and that connection. But as I said, the master plan needs some, some, some updating. One of the most notable things on the master plan that I'd say needs updated is on page twelve, there's kind of like this rough estimate of price per square foot of sidewalk and ADA ramps. I believe, I mean, it was a little, it was a little low, but I'd say back then in twenty eighteen, it was about ten dollars. Through COVID and inflation, that's now forty dollars. So it has gone up fourfold. So that budget, it's completely changed. I don't know if we gave a price for ADA ramps in the original master plan, but roughly estimated to, to fix an orphan corner, that's about twenty-two hundred dollars now, give, give or take. There are some unique situations where there might be a storm structure in the way or a hydrant in the way, and those obviously would be a lot more money. But as I said, the plan has kind of come to its end. I believe most of the plan was produced by Mr. Steve Ludi, and he was kind of driving the train for that. And now we kind of need to make a decision of, of how we want to move forward. We can, Pryne and Newhoff produces capital improvement plans. You guys are more than welcome to do it yourself, or we can sit down in future meetings and come up with a five-year plan together. But the one thing would be the sooner the plant, the sooner we can get a plan together, the better. Because usually the way the cycles work is we engineer throughout the winter, and if we can get bids out in, I mean, really, the earlier the better. If February, that'd be great, and then we'll get better prices that way, too. But other than that, something to think about, and this year's project is complete, and job well done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Do you have a moment to take any questions?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to take questions.
Thank you. Treasure.
Yeah.
So I'm looking on the map in Westwood.
Mm-hmm.
And the street, Sage Street, I believe is a portion of the city of Kalamazoo and then a portion of Kalamazoo Township.
Yeah.
On each side. Is there anywhere in the plans to put a sidewalk in there because of the apartments that are back behind there?
I mean, as of right now, if it's not on this map, there, there is no plan. So that would be one of the big things to look at. One of the things when I make capital improvement projects is I always like to make connections to public spaces, schools, parks, that sort of thing, and those take priority. The other thing that there isn't a lot of on this map is out, outside connections. One of the bigger, actually, I did add it to the twenty twenty-five just to kind of give an example, but one of the big things that was done, which actually connected to one of our small projects from, I believe, in twenty twenty-two, was M.DOT redid their corridor, and they added a large portion of non-motorized path along West Main. And kind of, for example, with that being there now, we have all these ADA ramps done back in the Westwood area, and a great, there, there's no way to get to that new non-motorized path on West Main. But if we were to build a path along Turwell, that would then connect the two grids together, which to me is a huge benefit.
So that would be in your proposal for the, for the next program that we're?
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, yeah.
Okay. If, if we, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
If we do, like, if we work with you, how many, like, if we did a set series of facilitated meetings with you? Like, how many do you recommend for, or like, what's that typically look like, just to get an idea?
I mean, really, there is no typical. It's however many it takes. Every community is different. I've had, I've had some where it's one, and I've had some that it's twelve. So it just depends kind of on your existing infrastructure, what your budget is. There, there's just a million different factors.
And when, like, if we, because I know we have some, like, strategic planning meetings and coming up, and maybe times where we can kind of discuss this, like, how to move forward?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, when would you suggest is a good time, like a deadline, to have a plan done by?
Like I said.
As soon as possible.
Well, as soon as possible, but like I said, if, the, the sooner we can have it done, the sooner we can start engineering it, and the sooner we can put it out to bid, the better prices we get. And it takes that forty-dollar price take possibly down to thirty dollars, or, or, you know, that's just an example. But Superintendent?
So we do have a budget for next year, and we have some recommendations to bring forward for the ninety thousand or whatever, the amount, it's ninety to a hundred that we have in the budget. So we could bring those recommendations forward and not start the master plan discussion next year, and so that we're?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Can you tell us about the money that's available from the state for projects that are already in place?
I mean, right now, the biggest one I work with is Safe Routes to School. But a, a lot of it, the big, the big chunk of money has run dry, and that was the ARPA money. But Safe Routes to School is the only thing I'm aware of right now.
Other questions or discussion? I suppose we'll set you free. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you, moving forward to getting a plan together as well. Thanks. Okay, with that, we will proceed. There is no old business this evening. There is one item of new business, the potential approval of the twenty twenty-six meeting calendars as presented, and a quick reminder, the meetings as presented do reflect our discussion from the last work session, which adjust all of the times to a six P.M. work session and seven P.M. regular board meeting. I did not make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six calendar of meetings and holidays.
Support.
It's a motion in support. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanted to just bring attention to one thing, that the, the planning and zoning meeting times are going to be brought forward and on the December eighth meeting, so those are not reflected on here. So, and that is detailed at the bottom of page one.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Will the building meetings be published as well on the?
Uh, yes, those, those can be available for that one as well. Those can be brought forward on that one as well, if, if those are available. I'll jump to the supervisor for that.
So we have some buildings, there are meetings, there are meetings, there's a study, only you have to go to the on the website, but the board does not.
Okay. Thank you. There we go.
Seeing none. Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Just, just real quick, once, I don't, of course, put any of them on to the website until they are approved. So once I have all of the meeting dates, and once everything is approved, then you'll start seeing them pop up on the website. I won't post anything until I have approval, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And again, as a reminder, just if you haven't flipped the page over, we are also in this consideration considering the holidays, which involve the office closure and staff holidays.
Yep.
And again, they reflect what we discussed at the last work session. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? And the motion carries. Thank you very much. As no items were removed from the consent agenda, we will proceed to board reports. Trustee Sherwood, what do you have?
I don't have anything, but I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe out there and get outdoors if you can.
Thank you very much. Treasurer Miller?
I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Glass?
I have no report.
Quick evening. Trustee Robinson?
I am pretty much in line with the rest of the folks. I do not have a board report tonight. I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your families, and stay safe.
Very much. Trustee Leonard?
Pretty similar. Happy Thanksgiving to all, and I would also just encourage everyone to try to shop local as we move into the holiday season. Try to keep your dollars in the township as much as possible.
Thank you very much. Clerk Mackey?
I also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I do have a board report, which I'm excited to share with you all. The, at the November twentieth Planning Commission workshop, we focused primarily on the township's small platted lots and the upcoming Small Lot Overlay District Public Hearing. The township assessor, David Becker, presented data showing we have more than three hundred and forty small-platted lots with water and sewer that are currently treated as non-conforming, which limits their buildability and marketability. He also reviewed broader housing trends, noting strong demand for owner-occupied housing and limited supply. The commission discussed two approaches to address this. The proposed Small Lots Overlay District, which is scheduled for a public hearing on December fourth, and a potential amendment to the non-conforming lot section of the zoning ordinance. There was interest in both approaches, and the intent is to provide the township board with both options, along with recommendations. We also briefly discussed the residential uses section of the zoning matrix, identifying items that may need updates as part of future ordinance work. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I have just a quick report this evening first. Yes, a happy Thanksgiving to all, and an emphasis on that wish to be safe. I've been watching the weather as I plan to drive across the state this week. There does seem to be some ice and potential snow on the way, so please be safe on the roads as winter comes. I also just wanted to amplify what County Road Commissioner, actually County Road Commission Chair, Dave Paloski, shared at our last meeting, which is that is part of the state past budget. Additional road funding was approved by the state for this coming year, twenty twenty-six, which does not have to be matched by municipalities, which means we'll have our usual discussion around par-fund matches in our usual road contract, and probably an additional discussion. The reason I bring it up is twofold. First, I have no additional details to add. It is, in, in saying that, it is not yet clear specifically how and to what degree those funds will be dispersed to different counties, municipalities, et cetera. But we will be keeping our ears open to the road commission to hear about that. And second, I do want to encourage all of us as the board to think about, you know, what sort of blue sky or, you know, ideal projects come to mind. If there are things you're hearing from residents about that may not sort of usually fit into a road contract that we, we might want to start to elevate, because there will be additional funds this year. That's all I have for my report. Superintendent?
Just one report. Well, we have a few calls. We have, we are behind about two days on the new brush pickup. So if you're hearing from the neighbors or anyone in the neighborhood, it's public and we didn't tell you last week. So hopefully by Wednesday, I think it should be a pickup and.
Thank you very much. We will proceed to the second public comment period this evening. Once again, if you'd like to make a public comment, please step to the podium. Let us know your name and address. You'll have three minutes to use as you choose.
Well, I have one quick comment. A while back, about a year and a half, two years ago, when I was working on my house on Lincoln Street, I had to get a variance to rebuild the front porch, to work on the porch anyway. And what I noticed was when I looked at what the, it had to be reviewed by an attorney, I guess it's an attorney for the township. His fees for that review were outrageous, ridiculous, and unbelievable. I don't know how much you pay him per hour, but it was crazy money. I mean, it was like a thousand dollars or something. I don't recall the number. I'm sure you can look in your records and review that. But whoever this individual is, that should have been like, what do they call it, a book, boilerplate. That was a boilerplate deal. I mean, he probably had his secretary or someone take a look at it, review it, he overlooked, he oversaw it, and okayed it. I mean, this is, you folks got to look at the fees that you're paying these people, these professional people. You can't just write them a check or say, okay, you know, this is the fee to do it, that's all right, and move on. And at that time, I think it was consumers, concrete was here looking for variants to build their new building. It was the same meeting that I was at. They did a beautiful job on the building, by the way. But anyways, their review, or he charged as much for their review as he did for mine. I mean, come on. I'm building a porch. I'm now building a five-million-dollar building. Come on, you guys. You got to start using your common sense. Talk to each other, figure this out. Or do we need new board people? I don't know. I don't mean to go there. But you got to get your act together. Please.
Thank you very much. Additional public comments this evening?
Hello again. Steve Ludi from Lauderdale Drive. I just wanted to extend from the work session. We were talking about yard waste comments, and there are options, and there are a ton of options for Kalamazoo Township residents for yard waste. You can subscribe to that for a weekly pickup from April through November. You can take advantage of the collections the township offers on a seasonal basis. You can take your materials to a private drop-off on a per-fee basis, a very meager fee, Best Way for the east side of the township, and at Ravine Road, and that's open six days a week. That's way more than Comstock Township's transfer stations open. Plus, you can compost in your own yard, which I do. I take all my neighborage leaves, and it's black gold. And so those kinds of options are available. But I also wanted to mention about, to, to, to say for the first time in my life, I'll never have the opportunity to say that Ryan Russell was wrong, because he was wrong today, and he said that I was responsible for the non-motorized plan. Actually, I had nothing to do with it. I was just a resident. I wasn't a board member, and there were about thirty-six residents involved in the committees to develop that plan. And when they did the presentation, one of the residents had a heart attack, and I had to help them get in the ambulance. So I couldn't even take care, I couldn't even listen to the presentation. So I had very little to do with it, Mr. Engineer Ryan Russell, but I appreciate the compliment. But also, I wanted to mention that one of, besides the things that you're doing already with AD, looking for spot repairs and ADA ramps and things like that, and also the sidewalk replacement program where we support residents who want to do their own sidewalk, but there's also opportunities to, to continue what Engineer Ryan Russell had said about the Lake Street intergovernmental cooperation. We can also intergovernmental cooperate with the city of Kalamazoo. It goes to Treasurer, Treasurer Miller's question, where they are eligible for Act fifty-one money, which is federal money. We as a township are not eligible for that. And so there are Sage Street and Timbora. And so there are Sage Street and Timber, Sage Street and Stonebrook Avenue are, are the jurisdictions of the city of Kalamazoo. Sage Street, even though it's half city, half township, it's the city's jurisdiction. And those are, have apartments, single-family homes and condos. And then also extending the sidewalks that township has already on Canterbury and Croydon could be connected, extended in the city of Kalamazoo to connect to Fraser Park. So those would benefit both of our communities without costing Kalamazoo Township a penny. So continuing those intergovernmental cooperation projects are great. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Other public comment this evening? Seeing none in the room. Is there any public comment on Zoom, Superintendent? Thank you very much. Excuse me? We're not adjourned. That was not a gamble, man. We'll close the public comment period this evening. We do have a proposal for a closed session this evening, so we have a motion prepared, which I will go ahead and move. I move that the township board meet in a closed session under the section eight one H of the Open Meetings Act, to meet with its attorneys to consider a written legal opinion exempt from disclosure under section thirteen one G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support.
There's a motion and support. I see no dire discussion, so we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Treasurer Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Glass?
Aye.
Clerk Mackey?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Trustee Leonard?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
And Trustee Sherwood?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. We will proceed to a closed session. Superintendent, please arrange the room.